All right, we're just gonna go.
If you could make sure you're talking loud to your microphone, just so everybody.
We're just gonna go by the set of line item by line item. So the first one will be three oh one, the real estate taxes. Total is two million, two hundred and thirty seven thousand. It's up slightly, and that's due to housing development.
What was this two million, one hundred forty thousand dollars based on? Because we had extended the no penalty period to the end of the year. Everybody were expecting that everybody would pay by the end of the year.
Well, most everybody has already paid.
Can you hear her answer, Tom? I think repeated, so let, let her answer it, and then I'll repeat it.
We have a lot of our collections in, but the majority of them that Jordan expected to come in are in.
Okay, so basically what she's saying is that what you would normally expect, normally use. So what hasn't been paid, or what you wouldn't expect from the year to be paid anyway. So basically, there's no, uh, there's not a big difference between a normal year and next year because of the pandemic. So that is based on, so the year-end taxes would be based on.
Correct.
Okay. Dorothy, we're ninety percent collected. All right, go ahead.
Okay, the next section is three ten, the Local Tax Enabling Act. It's slightly up at five million, five point one million. We are predicting a slight increase in earned income tax. Even though the pandemic is what it is, people are still working from home. So we really don't expect to see much of a decrease there. And we're expecting to see somewhat of an increase in the realty transfer tax because of the homes being built.
Okay.
Three twenty-one, business licenses and permits. That's just slightly increased due to cable franchise fees.
Okay.
Um, the next line item is three twenty-two, road encroachment permits. Um, that's just the openings of the streets.
Yeah, we can kind of skim through, I mean, some of that stuff that.
Three thirty-one is fines. That's pretty stable. Interest earnings, three forty-one, that's slightly increased. We just don't know where that's going right now with the market.
Go ahead.
It's unusually high this year. Mike has done a very good job with one of the presidents who has, who has been in violation with weeds in the condition of his property.
Can you hear me? Yeah, it is.
Three forty-two, the rental of the building, hopefully we'll be able to rent generations again next year. Three fifty-five is the shared revenue from the state. We're predicting a slight decrease there because of the pandemic. We've been told to expect a little bit less revenue in that area.
You can kind of move through a little bit faster. I'm not trying to rush, but like some of this stuff is like, it's self-explanatory.
Right. The, the big differences are the only differences this year to next year is some of the revenues are conservative because we, because of the pandemic. Next year in expenditures, we do have, um, an additional, an additional public works employee figured in under the four thirty line items. We do have.
So going back quickly, so just to be clear, three fifty-five, three sixty-one, three sixty-two, three thirty, three sixty-four, three seventy, like all the three are very consistent.
Yes. Yes.
In legislative body, we don't expect, we don't expect a huge change. That is what it is, executive, which is seller, the manager, the maker, uh, uh, size. There's not.
Correct.
Fact collection.
Is the same.
Literally the same.
That's the same.
Yep. Parking service is that same. Engineering services, two hundred fifty-three.
Engineering services, we're budgeting more because it's consistency, consistently running higher than what we're budgeting.
So, so we budgeted year twenty nineteen, you're at two twenty-two.
Right.
Budget was one seventy-five. I don't know why we scored that, but that clearly wasn't accurate.
Right, and as.
And I would expect this year to be higher because we're gonna have some bridge repairs.
We have the MS four program that's so far this year run us twenty-five thousand. We have the road program that ran us sixty-six thousand. The anger road program, uh, the slide to slope that's run us thirty-two thousand. We had Creedmoor, um, problems with Creedmoor that ran us sixteen thousand. The GIS program ran us twenty thousand. We have miscellaneous engineered, engineering at eighty-six hundred, North Bay Pioli, fifty-nine hundred. Planning and zoning.
Right, we understand that. I, I think my thought is that we under budgeted in twenty twenty. Double two fifty for twenty twenty-one. Some of the things that we, I'm thinking of as far as engineering.
I'm sorry, you're right, Ellen.
So I just said, I'm comfortable, and I'm actually glad that you did that two fifty versus lower number because obviously we missed the part of twenty twenty. So I, I was saying, I agree that it's, yeah. Go ahead, general government, but like, I mean, that is what it is, like. Do you wanna call out or? Yeah, so you guys are on the list. I had mentioned a document I started getting that I would like to see us really do in, in the story of all the parts we have. And the ones we need to sell, we sell the money for them rather than have them stay here. So like, I would like to see that be a project sooner rather than later. Yeah. Is there another one, George, of that? Anything on or?
Um, fire. Really, there's the salary in there for whatever you decide to do with the fire code officials. Placement, but everything else there is, remains the same as it was for this year.
I still get a contribution to South Bridge of fifty thousand. Salary changes same.
Yeah, everything is basically the same in that area.
Safety. Probably the same.
The, in under code and for, or coding, planning, there is money in there. Um, under printing and binding and zoning for an update to the, um, codification. If you choose to do that.
Yeah, just Cindy said, it was on the phone in case you didn't hear. There is money, uh, eight thousand dollars budgeted in. For the department, industrial products, we share the, you know.
Animal control, leaf recycling, that's all the same. Going into public works, everything there is the same. There is money in there. Um, Bill has asked for an additional employee.
Did you hear that? Bill, only thing in public works that really is changing is, uh, Bill has asked for an additional public works employee. Right.
But everything else, he's, everything else there remains the same. Salt, that's by contract.
Yeah, I know that's by contract, and you can't change it. This is more curiosity than anything. Don't, do we have an excess of salt from last year because it was such a late winter? Oh. Why a hundred and ninety-six thousand, and we made a difference?
That's the maximum amount we would have to spend on salt.
Okay, so because of pricing, and she said that's the max amount we would have to spend. That is necessarily what we would. It's necessarily what we would, we are gonna spend, but if it's a bad winter, that's the max we would have to spend.
So, yes. Traffic control devices, that area has stayed the same. And it actually looks like it's less to share because the Green Light Go project is done, well, almost done. Storm sores and drains, same. Pairs of tools and machinery, same.
Yeah, I'm really caught up on the news.
Capital Road Construction is, we've decreased that slightly. Um, parks. The only area that was cut in parks was the parks improvement. That's down to forty thousand.
Right, so I will explain that one. So we've been super successful of, over the past year or two in getting grant money. So. There is a line item that is easier, say, to get grant money for. Uh, I suggested that we could cut from that. I will focus harder on working staff and Jason, or T-Tat. Uh, started a meeting with him in the next week or so, uh, to get some grants for the project. So any, I might have a conversation with Park and Rec, Jack, but if there's any, um, would like to be done, no need to be done, maybe mention them to me, we can help us on trying to get money. Uh, stuff has gotten its own, it's person's, there. Yeah, I think so. Cut back and then try to get the money that's out there available, but.
A library, that's the same. The civil and military celebrations, that's the same. Um, a new line item is lease payments, and that is to get some vehicles for public works for Bill and Renato, possibly for planning and zoning. And that is for some, for a lease payment for, uh, three or four years on some new vehicles for them. Yes. Lease to buy. And then you start getting into your unemployment, your workers' comp. That's, the workers' comp's gonna go up because of some claims we've had. And then you get into your general liability insurance. The, um, Fire Department comes under four eleven. This, we've had claims on our other insurance also, plus workers' comp goes up every year. Yes, the Fire Department did. All right, we expect theirs to go up also. That's it.
Any questions? Share, uh, any, um, questions?
Was the reason, I can hear very clearly, was the reason I was playing at forty-eight thousand and five hundred, did it count?
What's the reason?
Forty-eight thousand, five hundred.
Well, we had claims this year on unemployment. We had, um. Yeah, we had a couple of claims on unemployment because of.
So we had, I'm just repeating it with him so he can't hear you. So we've had a couple of claims, two claims this year on unemployment. So I know the budget number in case we would have that in the, there.
Can you print for the COVID, uh, time off? Yeah.
Okay, I have to make sure you.
Even if we get that reimbursement, we still have a claim history.
Right.
Never COVID.
Yeah. Those claims were not on COVID.
Has it been discussed with the park, with the board in regards to forty thousand?
Um, I have, yeah, this is general money, so this is not some recreation money per se. But I didn't want to have a conversation with them, and so we had a conversation in the board. There is a ton of, uh, grants out there, and I think we've kind of, oh, get three years. So this is not a pressure to stop or get proven. In fact, we have a three hundred thousand dollar LSA grant that we need to go put in our car. Uh, so it's not any ways or forms to, to stop the path of parks improvement. It's just that, we need to be smart about money this year, and, and there is a lot of grant money in there. So we will have a conversation, but I wanted to have a conversation.
How much, how much of this whole quarter, thirty-five thousand left over was not spent?
Right, yeah.
So how much was spent, was that, is that Frank's project that, uh, he was steering?
I made a grant, I lost the grant we got last year for bridges.
Right, some, uh, equipment that was put in itself, or installed?
I mean, Frank, that was the LSA grant. Or there wasn't an additional parks project that was looked at.
I didn't hear the answer of why the asphalt was cut from the road at this point, or if then we're all caught up on the roads, or.
Yeah.
Any other things you can do, or I have to done?
Yeah, so essentially, all the roads that the parks can do with their machinery are done. So at this point, we're only left on the roads that we would need to contract out.
Is that, that's Phil's opinion, or is that Dan's or our?
Any other questions?
Codification, I know.
Um, hold on.
We're deciding to put that online now, or besides having it online, you wanna do, put that to binding?
Well, codification doesn't necessar, doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be printed. It could be, but it also means that we go through and make sure that everything online matches the changes. So, for example, so, hold on. So for example, at our last month's meeting before the meeting, we had that, you just know you're hearing. They relied on the website, and it was actually not updated with a change that we had made. Banning, um, contractors' yards from C one. So something needs to be done, so that we make sure that what's online and what in, that we're looking at and from the view of the public is actually the ordinances of.
Is the order of this function?
Yes.
Might be eight thousand dollars there then?
You hear his answer? Any other questions?
Last codification, or they put it online, correct?
Yeah.
And it's, do you really see that they wanna charge us to keep that updated, or what? So the same company that Bruce Bosley was working with?
Any other questions, Eric?
Uh, was this recorded, uh, through our, through our meeting room?
Yes, and project wise.
That, that recording, and, and you had a, or understanding answer here. During, um, didn't you have to extend her a little more quickly?
I mean, yeah, but it's all in front of you. I mean, she basically walked around and said that she can serve, probably wrong at this point, but she made very minimal, if any, changes to any departments. Cut back on Parks and Rec, we added additional employees to public work. We, uh, added a line for used to vehicles, uh, showing back from three cars to. And cut back slightly on road paving. But those are, for the part, very consistent with twenty twenty, is it?
Started to play.
Okay, Tom, any questions? Frank, any questions?
Now, just to point out, we, we've taken a conservative approach to the budget, and it's just over two hundred thousand dollars less than what the twenty twenty budget was.
Right.
So, you know, departments have really looked at their individual budgets and done what they've can for the township to, to meet the needs because of the pandemic.
I'll, I just wanted to let her finish what she was saying. She said that we've taken a very conservative approach to the budget, that all the departments have really, really put their budget in a big conservative effort for, so that they. So that, there, the town should, um, be. Yeah, there's only a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar difference between the.
There's a decrease.
For, for two hundred and seventy thousand dollars less this year than they were in twenty twenty.
Are you gonna ask that? We went through, don't, we're looking at the budget before you said.
We have, we're gonna do that tonight. Yep. Yep, so we're gonna do that. So we're gonna close the workshop and open, uh, public meeting right now, uh, to adopt this. And then we will, in twenty days' time, will vote to formally approve this one.
I think you're gonna go through this table and. I think it's mostly just. I think it's mostly to table this.
It's been moved.
And I'm making a motion to table this, please.
You can, you can, it's been moved and seconded.
Level of the motion on the floor.
Eric, it's, we can explain to the board right now and discuss it and your thoughts on it, but it's been moved and seconded to approve.
And I could take a motion that is tabled. Would you ask for a second on the table, please?
No, because it's already been moved by Ron.
And I have the right to make a motion to, Tom, do I not have the right to make a motion to table this? Just right there. I wanna be able to, and I wanna be able to look at this and hear, hear, okay. I just brought this in my hands this evening. Typically, uh, we have one meeting before we get to this point.
But typically, typically, Eric, there's a lot more, uh, fluff, I guess you would say, or request in the budget. In a year, a lot of wishes. This year, it's not like that. This year. This year, it's, uh. Fair bounds, it's what the concept needs, not what you want, just to be conservative. So that's why, most years, yes, I would agree with you, we would need multiple meetings to get through it, but there really isn't room to change anything. Or.
Yeah. What, uh, how we can make a change back?
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded.
I have a motion made to table, to table this. I would add that you would ask for a second for the table, please.
Eric, it's not worth. It's time.
Hold on, do I have the right to make a motion to table this?
Huh?
Um.
Does anyone, okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Is anyone willing to second this motion to table?
Boy, that's, that's dark.
Today. The, the problem, Tom, is there's not any place to move this, to move money around, first of all. Second of all, my concern, it is my opinion and my concern with what we're coming up, it may be more difficult to get meetings together where we could approve this. We have to advertise it for twenty days, we know that. To your point, if there's, if Eric sees something in these twenty days and can get a majority of the board to agree to a change, we can still make that change. But we need to get it. Huh? Yeah, but we need to get this advertised and if Eric sees something in the next twenty days, he can bring it to a majority of the board and if the majority of the board agrees, then we'll take it. So.
Eric, that's, that's.
Right, so nobody was willing to second your motion to table. There's been a motion to approve on, and by, um, all those favors signified as being. Or any, Eric? Last three, two. Okay, meeting. Coming. I can. I, Eric, I can. They hung up. I didn't mean to hang up on you. Higher for what?
Hello?
Sorry, I didn't want me to hang up on you. I picked up my phone and.
Okay. Did you end the meeting yet?
Yes, and then. Because of that, it's for a project. And this year's budget, then he wouldn't get another guy in next year. But, yeah, I'll have discussion and bring it to the December public meeting. All right. All right, the meeting is now, so I have to hang up on you.
Uh, hold on, or, or.
Say good.
Who was, who was wrong statement on, in regards to the asphalt?
No, he was asking, he said, no one is out, his employee in December instead of being till January. But.
Was any amount, was any amount in the budget to the SBO?
Yeah. Seventy-five thousand dollars.